Well, good morning, everyone. I'm looking at 9:30 here. This is John Neerman. It's my pleasure to call this work session of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to Order. Today is Thursday, January 28, 2021. The time is 9:30 a.m. And I'll begin with the roll call. I see you, Commissioner Lindley. Good morning.
Good morning.
And good morning, Commissioner Janekka.
Good morning, Chairman.
Our Commissioners are present. How about our General Counsel, Ms. Smith? Are you there?
I am. Good morning.
Good morning. And Director Baker?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
I can hear you and see you. Good morning. Well, let's get to it. Ms. Smith, please call the first item.
Item number one is the consideration and approval of the proposed revisions to the Commission's penalty policy. And the Executive Director is here to begin the presentation.
Thank you. And we'll begin with opening comments from the Commission, to the extent there are any, followed by the staff's presentation, and then take comments from any interested persons. Mr. McWhorter, I appreciate, we all appreciate OpEx's written comments on this item. And if any point you'd like to share anything additional, just let us know. Otherwise, I won't call on you. Colleagues, I also want to thank Mr. Sinclair, Ms. Cordell, and numerous other staff members who helped with this effort. I'm grateful to our various stakeholders for their participation in these policy revisions. And I look forward to the presentation and the discussion. Commissioner Lindley, is there anything you'd like to add to kick us off?
No, sir. I appreciate everything you said.
Commissioner Janekka?
I'll hold my comments and questions. Get right onto the discussion. Thanks.
Very good. Director Baker, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for gathering virtually once again to take the next step in moving forward. The last time I spoke to you about revising the penalty policy was at the September 24, 2020 work session. And the intention of that was to promote a deterrence to future noncompliance by using additional tools within the policy to impact the assessment of administrative penalties. You know, I think we talked a little bit about the goal of, as an agency, wanting to provide the most efficient permitting process in the United States while demanding full accountability within the bounds of TCEQ authority. And so, we wrestled with that question about how can we impact safety and maintenance within the bounds of our authority? Because as you guys know, oftentimes, there's a disconnect or maybe a misunderstanding about what our authority actually is and what we can do within the statute and within our rules. And so, this is just one prong of a multi-pronged approach to try to get to providing that full accountability. And so, what I'd like to do first is just very quickly talk about some of those things that we have done. We will continue to use the Office of the Attorney General on an as-needed basis for certain events of a certain size that require civil penalties. So that is a tool that we will continue to use as an agency. We will, once COVID is, once we sort of get out of this COVID working posture, we will move forward with enhanced investigation based on risk and fence line monitoring. This is something that we wanted to do. We were planning to do it, and then teleworking hit, and we haven't been able to do that like I wanted. But once we get back to a more normal working environment, we will be moving forward with that. We've been using flyovers in our industrial areas across the state of Texas with technology attached to the bottom of the aircraft that allows us to look at emissions from events. As you know, retention of environmental investigators is incredibly important to us. And within the agency, over the last biennium, we were able to repurpose certain salary-saving dollars to actually raise the base pay for investigators in Beaumont, Houston, and Midland. On top of that, we've used technology. The legislature during the last biennium gave us money for mobile monitors. We were actually able to deploy those after the hurricanes this year. So as plants were starting up, we had mobile monitors in the field providing real-time data on what they were getting in some of those fence line communities. We've enhanced our stationary monitors. We're either putting new ones in, we've moved them, or we've upgraded. We've done that in Houston, San Antonio, and the Permian Basin. I think that will give us better data as we go forward. And we will continue to keep looking at that monitoring, that web of monitors, and trying to find places to increase our presence there. We've upgraded our handheld monitors. We actually have a number of handheld monitors now that can speciate for benzene specifically. We've used them numerous times for a number of events. And it's a great tool for our staff to be able to go out. You know, sometimes they're out there all night long, but these are the tools they need to be able to really see what's going on around them. We've got a new drone fleet, which is going to give us unprecedented access to a number of these events as they occur real-time, also to be used for investigations going forward. We've really made it a goal to better use social media to tell our story and to be transparent with the public. And I think that we will continue to do that. I think ITC was a watershed moment for us with sharing air data in an almost real-time basis, and we will continue to use those tools to help keep the public informed. During this current legislative session, as you know, we are asking for additional money for our investigators across the board. So that idea is something that we started internally, and now we're going downtown to ask for funding specifically for that. Because as you know, we have a hard time competing with private industry. We train really great investigators, and then they go work somewhere else, whether it be a consultant, a regulated entity, or honestly, other local governments. And so, trying to become competitive with the local governments and trying to keep the investigators that may go to private industry for another year or two will give us a deeper bench of experience, a deeper bench of relationships that I think are really important. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to make that happen. We're looking for more technology, specifically more cameras that allow us to look at emissions and see them real-time. And we're asking for a million dollars in emergency response money. And then finally, we're looking at critical technology upgrades. And this is going to be, I think, a game changer for us. As you know, many of our platforms are built on the GIN language, not Java. As far as I know, GIN is not taught in universities anymore. If we move to a web-based Java platform, and we do that across the agency, we'll be able to do things that we've never done before. I think realtime apps that help everyone. I think they help the public from a transparency standpoint and knowing what's going on, but they also help the regulated community, I think, on permits and enforcement actions. So the idea of creating a seamless platform where everything talks to each other is something that I think helps continue that move towards transparency for both the public and the regulated community. And then finally, the two pieces in why we're here were penalty policy and compliance history. We're not going to talk about compliance history right now. We're moving ahead with that. At some point, we'll be back to talk about that with you. But today, we're talking about the penalty policy specifically. So the proposed policy was posted to the TCEQ's public website for comment on September 30, 2020. We received 17 comments by October 30, 2020, and those are included in your backup. After careful consideration of the public comments, we did make some changes. And I'll highlight two. Craig and Brian will probably go into some more detail here, but the major changes from when we last presented include, we modified the language of when the fifth revision will be applied. So it says, "Once effective, the policy will apply to all investigations conducted on or after the effective date that document violations commencing on or after September the 1st, 2011." That sounds a little confusing, but when Brian made it make sense to me, I think it can make sense to you, but there's some legal reasons why we have to reference that September 1st, 2011 in that piece. And then, in light of numerous, and you know, honestly, really thoughtful comments received from the public, we actually decided not to include, at this time, adding an upward adjustment for air emission events in counties with a population of 75,000 or greater. I want to be really clear with this, because I know that it could be seen in a number of ways. But the reality is, is that once we looked at the comments and we really stepped back from that number, 75,000 seems a little bit arbitrary. So my commitment to you and to the public is that we will go forward and consider, study, research how to further address air emission events within the policy and otherwise potentially refine the impact enforcement remedies might have regarding nearby populations. And I think that we'll probably, we'll address the results of our further analysis with, I think, a future revision of the policy, hopefully, in my mind, later this year. But we're looking at things that go beyond just population. And I think that it makes sense, if we take this step, I want to get it right. And so, we decided to pull it out for right now and do a little bit of a deeper dive into how to get to that in a way that's sensible, but in a way that also targets, I think, what we're trying to do. And so, that's, so we have pulled that out for the time being, but I will tell you, at some point, we will bring that back with some additional layers of data involved outside of just the population. All other suggested changes that we previously discussed with you are presented for consideration today, and those changes include statutory changes from the 86th legislature, changing the PST major source threshold from 50,000 gallons a month to 100,000 gallons a month, increased percentages in environmental slash property and human health matrix, and the programmatic penalty matrix, additional flexibility in determining the number of violation events, and then removing the 20% deferral provided for expedited enforcement for matters that have two or more prior administrative penalty orders set out in the Texas Water Code, Section 7.105, B2, B4, and B6. So with that being said, just so you know, we have Brian Sinclair on the line today. We also have Craig Prissloff and Alyssa Cordell. And then, the substitutes in the dugout, we have Ramiro Garcia and Susan Johnson. So we've got the A-Team here today, ready to answer all questions that you may present and/or ask. And so, with that, I will stop. If there's any questions specifically, and if not, it may be worth just handing over to Mr. Sinclair and letting him take the reins and move forward with his presentation.
Colleagues, any questions at this point? All right. We're good to go. Thank you, Toby.
You're welcome.
All right. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and General Counsel, and Executive Director. This is Brian Sinclair, representing the Executive Director. I was going to, can you hear me okay? I'm not sure.
Perfectly.
Can you see me also?
I think I'm looking through the screen, Brian.
Oh, I chose the wrong one. There it is. Okay. All right.
We see you now.
Yes. Thank you. I was going to go over some of the specific changes that were, have been proposed in the penalty policy, some of the comments that we received. And I thought I would start with the ones that are the most, kind of got the most attention and where there may be the most questions. And first is the applicability of the language that the Executive Director has already talked through. And when you end up talking about the applicability language, it sounds very bureaucratic, and perhaps it is. So I'll try to translate that into something that's a little easier to understand. But I will read the language, just first of all, just to make sure that it's out there. "The fifth revision of this policy, effective on whatever effective date it is, becomes effective, applies to all investigations conducted on or after that effective date, documenting violations that occurred or began after September 1, 2011." Let me talk a little bit about the September 1, 2011 date. That was the date where we implemented the statutory limit changes and some percentage changes in the environmental property and human health matrix and programmatic matrices that implemented that different legislation. So what I'd like to do is just completely carve out the pre-September 1, 2011 violations and leave those on Rev. 2 as they are now. There are very, very, very few violations from that long ago still being referred to us. And so, if we carve those out, then it greatly simplifies the path going forward. Penalties, again, for violations which are referred for enforcement from investigations conducted on or after the effective date of Revision 5 of the penalty policy are going to be calculated under Revision 5. Penalties for violations which are referred for enforcement from investigations that are conducted prior to that effective date of Revision 5 will continue to be calculated under Revision 4. A couple of clarification points that I wanted to make. If the investigation was conducted over multiple days, we'll use the start date or the earliest date of that investigation for penalty policy applicability. So if there was a, let's say if the, for example, if the penalty policy, Rev. 5, became effective February 1, and there was an investigation that was started today and didn't complete until February 5, we would put that under Revision 4 if there was a enforcement referral. If the, if it's, if the effective date is February 1, and they began that investigation on February 2, then it would go under Revision 5. Another point of clarification, you know, often we get enforcement referrals from notices of violation that occur earlier. And a notice of violation, of course, is an opportunity for them to come, for an entity to come back into compliance with a violation by a certain date. So if there's a violation that results in a notice of violation prior to the effective date of the Revision 5 of the penalty policy, and then an investigation occurs on or after the effective date of Revision 5 and determines that they did not come into compliance, then that, and it results in an enforcement referral, then that enforcement referral would be, the penalty would be calculated under Revision 5. Are there any questions about those examples?
None here. Thanks, Brian. Bobby?
I just want to make sure I entirely understand it. What, when does it typically happen, which typically happens first? The investigation or the assignment of the enforcement action referral?
The investigation. There's an investigation that documents violations. There's an enforcement action referral that we receive, and then we assign that enforcement action referral to staff to begin to develop the enforcement action.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Regulated entities that are, or there are lawyers who are trying to figure out which penalty policy applies can read the text in the penalty and sort it out. It's not a single date they're looking at. They're looking at a couple of different, a couple of different dates. And now, they also have the benefit of Brian's explanation if they are fortunate enough to pull up this archived video. But I think that makes sense to me. Colleagues, anything else on the effective date of Revision 5?
So just so, I'm going to try and regurgitate a little of what you said, so I completely understand, because this was a question I had, so I'm glad you addressed it. I can check it off my list of things I'm going to ask. So just to break it down very simply, and I know there's nuances, but very simply, it sounds like the date of an investigation is, that's what's in play here when we're talking about the penalty policy. I thought it was very helpful how you said, if there's an investigation that happens today, January 28, it doesn't wrap up till February 8, it's going to be under Version 4, assuming we were to move forward with Version 5 and say a start date of February 1. So it all comes down to the investigation date of which penalty policy revision is going to be applicable to that entity. Is that an okay way to say it?
That's correct.
Please clarify.
And it's the investigation that results in the enforcement referral itself.
Okay. Okay. Hopefully, that's clear for everyone that's tuning in or will come back and watch. I'm glad y'all clarified that. I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Next up...
All right. I can have one question. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I'm curious, because Toby references in his comments about why we do use the 2011 date. There was something about statutorily, it's my interest. I figured, being the non-attorney when I read this, there's something about 2011, and that's why we go back to that date in a lot of instances. So I'm just curious why, what that is.
That's the date that, for many programs, the statutory limits changed from $10,000 per violation per day up to $25,000 per violation per day.
Yeah.
And there were, the percentages in some of the matrices were different than they are now, under Revisions 3 and 4. Or, so the, so what we want to do is just to keep from having to deal with multiple statutory limits, the old statutory limits and the new policy, we just would leave all of those back on Rev. 2. And again, it's very rare for us to get a violation referred to us nowadays that would be applicable, where Rev. 2 would be applicable. We just want to leave all those violations under the, that occurred before September 1, 2011, under those old statutory limits, because those statutory limits are still applicable to those violations.
That's what I figured. Thanks.
All right. All right. The next one I wanted to go over was the other factors that justice may require. Toby has already talked a little bit about that. The, originally, we had recommended that we do a 20% enhancement in other factors as justice may require for counties which had 75,000 or greater population. As Toby has already mentioned, that we're, you know, after further consideration, we're recommending that we don't include this proposed change. Again, we're looking at emissions events, you know, across the state. We looked at the data and saw where emissions events were happening and concluded that the way we had done this, that proposed revision, didn't really thoroughly address the issue. And so, as Toby's already said, we will, you know, consider, study, research how to further address air emissions events within the policy and potentially refine the impact that enforcement remedies might have regarding nearby populations, communities, and state air sheds. And we need to look at multiple factors, some of which were mentioned in the public comments. And we will look at those factors and other factors that we can identify. And again, we intend to address the results of this analysis with a further revision of the policy. And if you have questions on that, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Colleagues, any questions or comments?
I just want to comment that I'm really glad y'all gave a deep look to this factor, and I think that I'm pleased to hear that y'all are continuing to look at it and the intention, Director Baker, you said, was to bring something back up this year for further proposal. I think that it's really important, reviewing those comments, I was struck by how much the other factors as justice may require, in the public's opinion, seems to be a really flexible and really, everything can fit in there. So, you know, a lot of suggestions for how to use that instead of what we proposed or in addition to what we proposed. I would love to just follow a little more closely, the closer look that y'all are giving. Particularly, I think I understand that part of the analysis in reaching the conclusion, maybe the 75,000 population number is arbitrary, was overlay of different mapping data, and you can see kind of the heat map of emission events and population, and that doesn't necessarily fit within our lovely state's county borders. So I'm eager to hear about our limitations of our current resources and current tools we have in terms of doing some of the things that commenter suggested, looking at simply the number of the population out to a certain distance from a facility. That's a changing number. That's a hard thing for us to peg and say that we need to know. So I'd love to hear from y'all, not today necessarily, but down the road, what, whether that's feasible or whether there's different metrics that may allow for growth over time. But one thing I did want to ask, though, as y'all were embarking on and giving it a closer look, was whether you may be able to involve our Office of Chief Clerk. And her office is responsible for our agency's environmental equity program and environmental justice programs, a piece of those. And I think that this is a really important issue that falls squarely under that policy bucket as well. And I think it would be very helpful to have their input and their involvement, perhaps also our Office of Public Interest Council. I'm sure they're involved already, but those are the two requests that popped out in my mind as y'all are looking at the runway ahead.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Janekka, and we can, we will include the Office of the Chief Clerk and Office of the Public Interest Council in what we, in the resources that we go to and look for information and input on how to move ahead with the, how we approach emissions events.
Thank you.
And I guess all I would add is, you know, for staff, you're moving forward on this particular item to bring something back to us later this year with the Commission's encouragement. I'm glad you're doing that. I think this is important. And, you know, I would urge that we, you know, carefully articulate what the policy objective is, and then continue to work on metrics, you know, that support that, a new mechanism or policy to more directly support that. It sounds like you're on the right track. I'd also like to be kept in the loop as you're working towards the solutions, because I'm very interested in this. And this is, you know, in my mind, if we want to talk, just for a moment, about the policy objective, this is very much about environmental justice communities, but it's not limited, at least in my view, to, just to environmental justice communities as those might be defined. You know, I think I would, I would describe it as a policy that's directed to provide some additional support or relief to any community that bears a disproportionate burden from activities regulated under our jurisdiction, you know, whether they're fence line or rural, whether they're affluent, without regard to the ethnic cultural makeup of those communities, recognizing that many of them are environmental justice communities, but we're not limiting ourselves to that. So those are my two cents and my encouragement as you continue to work on this element.
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate that input, and we will, we will take these words, those words to heart as we move ahead.
Thank you, Brian. Anything else on this topic, colleagues? Seeing none? Brian?
Mr. Chairman, if I may make one statement.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the direction, and we'll take that to heart as we go back and reconsider this factor. You know, one of, the goals of any good comprehensive compliance and enforcement program is compliance first, accountability and deterrence. And our goal is, hopefully, that on the compliance aspect of things, that we have less emissions events across the state, and that some of our other initiatives are taken to heart and that we don't have as much enforcement with respect to reportable emissions events. So that's always a goal first and foremost. But in the end, if we need to go into enforcement and use that as a driver to help ensure the accountability and deterrence, which then factors into compliance, we did want to take a more holistic look at across the state, at the impacts of reportable emissions events, and how to best track that into the penalty policy. So your guidance from the DIAS today is very helpful to us. We will take that to heart and say, carefully, stay in touch with you throughout this process and maybe come back with a further revision at a future work session. So thank you today.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. One of the, uh, moving along to, uh, to continuing violations, which is also, um, uh, an area of the, the proposed changes which elicited, uh, a range of comments. Um, and again, that what we're proposing to do here is for, um, some of the categories in the environmental property and human health matrix and programmatic matrix to change the maximum number of events that we can go up to from, in the actual moderate category, from up to monthly to up to weekly, uh, for actual minor, from quarterly to up to monthly, uh, for potential releases, potential major, from monthly to weekly, from moder- in the moderate category, uh, quarterly to monthly. And in the minor, potential minor category, from a single event up to quarterly for continuing violations. And then, uh, then in the programmatic matrix, for moderate, from quarterly to monthly and for minor, from single event up to quarterly. We can already go to daily events on the actual, uh, majors and the, uh, programmatic majors, even though, um, you know, for programmatic major, we very rarely do that. Uh, but this elicited a, a wide range of comments, um, uh, and I wanted to kind of address those. Uh, you know, the purpose of, of really doing this was to allow kind of for a more accurate assessment of a violation's duration in, in appropriate circumstances. The intent here is to provide additional flexibility and discretion to increase the frequency of the events. It's, if it's warranted. Uh, there's not a, an intent to generally change current practice on a penalty event. However, there are situations, uh, that we believe, uh, where, where it would be, uh, appropriate to do so. And the factors that we would consider in determining whether or not to exercise that discretion are really the same factors that we currently consider in, in determining a penalty. You know, the, the things like the impact of the violation, the quantity and concentration of pollutants, uh, duration of the violation, the proximity of receptors, history and extent of previous violations, and the, and the size of the violator. Um, and, and really, the bottom line is, 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 you know, when you, when you look at a penalty, um, is, you know, when you consider all of that, is the amount that's, uh, that you end up with appropriate, uh, and to, and, and necessary to deter future violations. And, you know, you, there's not a, there's not a hard and fast, you know, bright line where, where if it's, if it's, you know, over this amount, uh, or has this impact, you know, it, that it, that we would choose to use those additional events. Um, uh, but I, I don't know if you have any questions about this particular issue or, or this particular change.
Questions or comments?
I, I believe you're, you're, if I could restate in, in layman's terms, basically, y'all typically tend to just use the maximums unless there's compelling reasons to go, uh, into the discretion area of ED's authority there, but that rarely happens. Um, is that effectively another way of what y'all, what the current practice is?
It, it changes from program to program, um, what, whether we use the maximum. It actually don't use the maximum in every situation. It, it's kind of the starting place in terms of when we, uh, there, at least the current maximums are the starting place when we consider. But there are other, other things we consider, like we rarely use the maximum, uh, for petroleum storage tank cases, uh, because we generally, those violations end up being potential major. And the variation in whether, when a, when a, uh, particular referral, uh, gets sent to us makes using monthly events, um, kind of unfair, because, you know, somebody could pay twice the penalty or three times the penalty for a, if we use monthly events. So generally, we use quarterly events for that, even though we could go up to monthly.
I appreciate that. And thank you for helping, for clarifying that. That was my, my impression. I just wanted to confirm my understanding there. And I think that that's a really compelling point that you referenced, that we currently have the authority to go up to a daily frequency on programmatic major violations. If someone, uh, misses the step where they, they needed to apply for a permit before conducting an activity, I think that falls into that, that category. We don't tend to typically crank it up to the absolute maximum. So I, I appreciate many of the comments in that vein, that as we increase the ED's authority to go up in frequency, there's the expectation, well, we will on every, every circumstance. I don't, I don't agree that that is the case. And I, I think that, I appreciate you pointing that out, Mr. Sinclair. I, I agree in that, that was a conclusion I reached as well. Thank you.
Bobby, thanks for that. And the key, you know, key word is up to, and I think it's probably going to be the, you know, uh, somewhat less common that we would go above what the, um, fourth version of the penalty policy would allow. But, um, but if we need to, the fifth version of the penalty policy would allow us to do that. And, you know, I've seen some agreed orders come across where I feel like we, um, may have been hemmed in a little bit by, um, by that cap when you're counting events based on duration. And so I think that this is an appropriate way just to give us, um, greater discretion to apply appropriate penalties. And it really points to, you know, the fundamental challenge that this policy is meant to deal with is the legislature has given us statutory authority to assess penalties within a range. And, um, you know, and they differ from program to program. Uh, from, in many cases, it's $0 all the way up to $25,000 up to per day, per violation. And, um, so our staff is charged with taking, you know, the universe of violations and, uh, you know, they, some of them tend to fit patterns after a while, but, but, but every one of them is case by case. They're their own unique, um, violations and they have their own unique set of facts. And so how do we bring, um, bring fairness and rationality and order to that? And that's what the penalty policy is all about. Let's try to fit them into matrices and, um, you know, try to bring some level of fairness to it. And, um, you know, you can't, you can't, we can't be mechanical. We need to exercise discretion at some point. And I think that this is an appropriate way to, uh, give us a little bit more latitude, a little bit more discretion in applying appropriate penalties, is, is my view of it.
I have one, one question real quick. Um, I g- well, I guess two, actually. Um, so there was a commenter, and I'm actually just going to read this from y'all's summary, and, but I highlighted in, in their comments as well. Glad to see that y'all had, um, uh, referenced it. Um, but you say, you know, one comment generally supported the increases, but expressed concern that the percentage increases for actual minor violations scare for minor sources than for major sources, and that minor sources are being penalized disproportionately. Um, I think that's something I, I'd like to, I, I'm not saying I disagree with what y'all proposed, but I think we owe people a little bit more explanation on that. Um, you know, when I look at the chart, I, to me, it's, it's pretty clear how y'all did it. Um, but, uh, I'd like for y'all to explain just a little bit more, how, how would you address that concern? Because I, I think we owe more of a response on that comment. And then kind of my second question, um, is I'm wondering, I think you are, but I'm wondering, are y'all, uh, here in a minute maybe going to show examples of, um, new calculations? What those are going to look like? Is, is that coming up in a minute or, um, anyway? I just see that.
I, I can talk through, I can talk through some examples. We're not going to show the examples.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely need to do that, because I know the work session, you know, I mentioned it, Bobby mentioned it, and I know there was some comments of, are there going to be examples provided? So I'm probably jumping ahead to what you're about to do. So I guess first, you just answer the question, you know, the question that, uh, at least one commenter raised, but I think it was more than one about, my summary would be why the big increase for minors?
Well, uh, part of what we wanted to do when we increased the, the, uh, the percentages in the boxes for the actual, uh, releases, is that we wanted to make sure that, that any actual release, uh, penalty was at least equal to or greater than that of any of the potential release categories. Okay? So the, so what you see on, um, on the proposed, uh, penalty matrix, uh, environmental property, human health matrix, is that the, um, the, um, the percentages for minor harm went up to 30% from 15 to 30% for, uh, major sources and from 5 to 15% for minor sources. And that, that makes it, uh, the same as the potential major category. So that's, that's how we got there.
I would, I would respectfully push back on that particular comment you, you raised, Commissioner Lindley. I think that that's, uh, I shared your concern about it and looked closer. And I think I was satisfied in that it's a little disingenuous to observe the, the comparison and, and saying that the percentage increase was greater, it was a, a jump from 15 to 30 for major sources and a jump from 5 to 15 for minor sources. Yes. Percentage wise, going from a smaller number to a less small number, it made a greater percent increase, but it was still a greater numerical increase. So I'm, I'm not sure that that, that comment carries as much weight with me, when in fact, uh, depending on how you want to look at the statistics, it, it changes the optics of it a little more. But it is a point well taken, and I appreciate your raising the question about the examples. Uh, it, it was one that I, I appreciated, uh, Mr. Sinclair and, and ED staff helping, helping sit down with us and walk, walk us through. And I, when I got to see them, I, I almost regretted asking, because it almost, uh, answered one question and raised two more in my mind, where, uh, it, it really is devilishly hard to take any sort of example through this complex of a decision document and put out some output that, that clarifies, rather than clouds, because there are so many different assumptions and it, it could fit in this box, but then is this adjusted up or down? And almost every violation, going, going right back to what you said, Chairman, it, it, every violation is a case by case. It, it's all a different independent story. And, and ED staff really have to endeavor to understand and undertake to try to help the public understand what the story is behind that violation, to understand where our agreed order or, uh, whatever the, the settlement may come out at is, is fair and appropriate. And it's hard to do. I think it, it did help clarify some things in my mind, but the differences across different penalties or across different approach really are very, very wild and, not wild, but very wide. Um, I'll, I'll stop there and hope that Mr. Sinclair can help us, uh, get a little more clarity as he describes it further.
And I, I'll just say one, so I kind of thought your answer might be that, you know, one reason where, um, you know, uh, in- increasing minor actual violations is because if we can kind of prevent an event, i- is kind of what I was thinking y'all, y'all might be getting at somewhat. If, if you can ding someone when it's in a minor actual, maybe you nip that in the bud and so we never get to a, um, moderate or a major. Um, that's kind of what I was thinking the reasoning was. And if that is way off the mark, please feel free to correct me. And that's why, um, let me just make this a general comment. This will prob- I probably should have said this at the beginning. But, um, I, I do plan on, if, if we get to the point of making a motion, I, I would be, uh, supportive of adopting this. The main thing I want clarification on was the, um, the, uh, the revision date, effective date, and you've done that. I do have other questions. I, I think they will be answered. I think I might already know the answer to a lot of them, but I am going to have questions as we go through this, because I, just to be very candid, um, I, I do, I did not love what was filed in backup. I'll just put it that way. I thought, um, I read all the comments and I read y'all's document and actually read y'all's document and then read the comments, that's the order I went in. I didn't love reading over and over again that the executive director reviewed and considered these comments and no further changes were made. So half the time, that's appropriate, but the other half, and I don't know, it might not be half. But there were times I thought we needed to say more, we needed to explain more. Because I think the ED has a good explanation and probably has a solid reason why changes weren't made. But I think that needed to be stated. And so I'm not saying I want y'all to go back and edit this document, because I want to move forward with the penalty policy. I want to get revision five in place. And that's why I'm saying I'm, I'm, once something changes, I'm probably going to be pretty comfortable if a motion comes up moving forward. But I do think we owe all the people that commented and anyone else that is interested but didn't comment it, more of an explained, explanation on these things. So that's where the heart of most of my questions are going to come from. And that's kind of why I said, you know, are there examples or can you say more about the, the, um, minor source percentage increases? So just want to, just want to say that. And I, and I probably should have laid that at the beginning, but just so you know where I'm coming from, there's, there's a couple of things when we go through that I just thought, y'all, y'all, y'all can say more to that. I know you can. And, uh, I think, I think we owe the commenters a little more, um, of a response. So I will stop there and let you, uh, carry forward with your, your presentation. Thanks, Brian. Oh, I'm sorry. If Melissa, I know Melissa Cordell is listening, and I think Melissa might have been the first person to probably take a stab at this document. And Melissa, I think you are a wonderful employee. This is not a reflection on, on, on your work ever, because I, I think you are a rock star. So I just want to make that comment. I just think collectively, the document could have some more beef to it. And now I will stop.
And if I can, I'll jump in the, in the tiny, narrow window of, of open air here and just add a hearty ditto to that. I hadn't even occurred to me to look at it in that, in that manner. I think you're absolutely right. The ED response to comments being a little opaque by practice is, is a necessity, I think we fall into in terms of, it's really hard to show all your cards when you're in the, the seats of the regulator. But if, if, to whatever extent y'all can endeavor to provide more explanation or a little more narrative where possible, I think that that is always, always a great improvement on, on our work product. And I, I think that that's a great point about, uh, statements about, about comments considered and responded to often leave the public, uh, wanting, wanting more. And if we can, if we can go further to explain either in these settings or, uh, in, in our comments, I think that's always a good thing. So thanks for making that suggestion. I, I agree a hundred percent.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, if it's all right, what I'll do is I'll go back through the, uh, the, the, uh, portions of the policy, uh, revision or proposed policy revisions, uh, that we didn't talk about yet. And just to see if there are any questions, uh, on those. And maybe, uh, Commissioner Lindley, that you can, you can ask the questions that you had about our, our response, um, in, in the, in the context of these. Uh, the statutory authorizations, we, um, we reorganized the statutory authorizations table in alphabetical order just to, to, um, to make it easier to, to, to find what you're looking for. Uh, and then we removed the, the civil penalty statutory limits from the table. And, uh, basically, there was, uh, support for, for that. So the, and the, and the stats, that we added the, uh, the statutory limits or we changed the statutory limits for public water supply, aggregate production operations and dry cleaners, uh, in accordance with, uh, with prior legislation. Uh, for the petroleum storage tank, um, uh, major, minor source, we, we proposed going from, uh, 50, I mean, uh, 50,000 gallons as a threshold for a major source, uh, to more than 100,000 gallons. Uh, we did get comments on this that, um, you know, uh, one, one comment supported the proposed change while a couple of others didn't support cha- the change. Uh, they cited, um, concerns that, uh, the cost of compliance alone was not a, not enough of a justification when smaller entities can, can cause environmental damage. And, uh, and there was some concern about losing federal approval of the PST program if the program, uh, becomes less stringent than the federal standards. Uh, this isn't a program becoming less stringent, it's just changing a threshold for a penalty calculation. Most of the current PST penalties, uh, uh, are calculated, um, for ma- for, uh, minor sources. So this just changes that threshold up a little bit, um, and, uh, and, and would result in, uh, lower penalties for some entities, uh, than they currently get. Uh, but there's still, uh, we believe that they are high enough to be a deterrent to future non-compliance. And we've certainly seen that in the, the PST program, uh, that the, uh, the compliance rates have improved over the years.
Um, I'm, I'm glad you said that. That was actually going to be a question of mine, which I, again, I think what y'all propose is good. Um, but I, there were a lot of people that raised the concern about losing federal approval. I don't think this, um, threatens that at all. At least that's my understanding. Um, and I think OPIC even had a good comment, uh, that it would, may change, well, anyway, they, they were, uh, supportive, I'll say that, that smaller entities often have more limited resources. And anyway, um, I thought it was a good change. have more limited resources and anyway, I thought it was a good change. At least I think I'm reading their comment right. So I'm glad you addressed that. I, that's kind of an example of like, just add in a sentence maybe next, next revision cycle about why we don't think federal approval would be jeopardized because I, I don't think it is and I, I think, I think it's a good, I'm, I'm comfortable with the adjustment, let me put it that way, but I think we should owe, I think we owe the commenters a, a little more info. So I'm, I'm glad you spoke to it. And that was going to be a question and example I had of, let's give a little more because I know we have a good answer.
I can't help myself. I've got to chime in on this too and just be, and just be clear that we've heard a chorus of complaints about the burden that we place on small mom and pop gas stations, not from the small mom and pop gas station lobby, but from public interest environmental groups. And there's several, several news articles that have been published around that and, and on this point, you know, I certainly appreciate the, the comment and I think they're right. So I, I support this change.
Right. Thank you, Chairman. We already visited the, the penalty calculation in the environmental property and human health matrix somewhat. We've, we did get several comments there where they wanted to, you know, some of them were in support of the changes, but some of the, you know, as has already been mentioned, the, the concern about the actual minor violations is greater for minor sources than for major sources. There were some that opposed the increases and, and was, and, and proposed kind of an alternate scheme or methodology for, for, for calculating penalties. There was also concern that these revisions should only apply to non-governmental entities because, you know, the increased penalties wouldn't work as a deterrent for political subdivisions, but we decided not to make any changes there. For the political subdivisions, many of those, if they meet the criteria, if they're eligible, they are able to correct the violations alleged in the order through a compliance SEP so that they can apply those dollars directly to coming back into compliance. And also within the current penalty policy, nonprofit organizations and political subdivisions and other governmental entities aren't real, aren't subject to economic benefit enhancements. And so there's already some provision for, for governmental entities in, in how we approach the penalty. And I didn't know if there was any other questions or comments about this particular section.
You know, if, if you were going to, I don't know how you said it a minute ago, talk through some examples, then that, that's the only thing I'd want to hear on this, but I don't, I don't have any other questions.
I can, I can talk through some examples.
And again, if I'm putting out of order in your presentation, you can say, hold on, that's coming.
I can, I can talk through examples at any point that you want me to. If, if now is the right time to do that, then, then we'll do that.
Sure. I don't know.
Okay. Well, let, let's, let's talk about a couple of examples. The first one would be an air emissions event lasting two days at a, at a major source that met the, the mandatory civil referral criteria in seven dot one oh five V six, which I haven't gotten to that change yet, but that's, that's one where they wouldn't be eligible for a deferral, for expedited settlement. So under penalty policy revision four, that two day emissions event, in this case, we will say that it was an actual moderate and an actual moderate is calculated at thirty percent of the statutory maximum, which, which is twenty-five thousand dollars, the statutory maximum is for that. So it results in a seventy-five hundred dollar base penalty. We would do one monthly event for that and so the base penalty would be seventy-five hundred. And if they would be eligible, they might be eligible for a twenty percent deferral for expedited settlement for that violation. Under proposed revision five, it would be an actual moderate still, fifty percent. So it'd be twelve thousand five hundred dollar base penalty rather than seventy-five hundred, one monthly event, and they would not be eligible for a twenty percent deferral for expedited settlement because they had met that mandatory referral criteria in, in seven dot one oh five V six. Any questions about that particular example? Okay. Another example would be, let's say, an air emissions event that lasted twenty-two days at a major source, which also met the seven dot one oh five V six mandatory civil referral criteria, but we did an administrative case under seven dot one oh six with a, with a concurrence of the AG. Under the current penalty policy, again, it's seventy-five hundred dollars, even though it lasted twenty-two days instead of two days, we're still limited to that one monthly event. So it'd be seventy-five hundred under proposed revision five. The, it, again, it would be a twelve thousand five hundred dollar base penalty per event if it's actual moderate. If we did one monthly event like we do currently, it'd still be twelve thousand five hundred. However, with the increased flexibility, if it was determined that, that we should, then we could go up to weekly events under, under the revision five. And, and if we do that, then it would be three weekly events and the penalty would be thirty-seven thousand five hundred. And that's the base penalty. And, and the assumption behind these are, you know, this, these don't include any good faith effort adjustments or compliance history adjustments or any other kinds of adjustments. I'm just trying to strip away the, all the other things that, that could get in the way and try to look purely at, at the, the penalty policy examples. And again, it would not be eligible for a twenty percent deferral.
I think that's a really good example, Brian, because what this revision does is it locks us into, to a certain step up in the penalties, but then it also opens up the window so it provides us a lot more headroom and a lot more discretion to, to set what we consider to be an appropriate penalty.
Now, there's, there are some other, I'll, I'll give you another example. The, and I don't know if you're, if there's, if there's a particular kind of example you might be looking for, I might be able to tailor that because I'm, I have a lot to choose from.
Emily?
No, I would say keep going, whatever your next one is. I agree, these, these have been good. And I do, I like the way it sounds like we would continue to conduct our business, which is we start with the base, right? And then if, if we need to go up, we can. I, I prefer that method of, and, and there might, you know, and I know there's more than just going up, there's a million little things. What I'm trying to say is I would prefer to start at the base and go up than to say, boom, here's the max and then deduct, if that makes sense. So I, I like that y'all are doing it that way because I would rather, I'm just, I'm just glad we do it that way. I, I, so I'll let you go on with your next example.
The, the next example is, is the, trying to choose one. Let's, let's say there's a, an exceedance of a, a twelve month rolling VOC emissions limit at a major source. And in this, this case, they may not have met the, we'll say they didn't meet the mandatory referral criteria and the duration of it was twenty-four months. And let's say that the, the total unauthorized emissions were at a level that we would call actual moderate. So again, as actual moderate, it'd be a seventy-five, under the, for the penalty policy, it'd be a seventy-five hundred dollar base penalty, twenty-four monthly events, and the, the penalty would be a hundred eighty thousand. And they may be eligible for, for a twenty percent deferral if, under that scenario. Under the proposed revision five, if we classify it as actual moderate, it's twelve thousand five hundred base penalty at twenty-four monthly events, which reflects the current practice, it would be three hundred thousand dollar penalty. If we go weekly, I believe the penalty becomes one point three million dollars. And so the, for long duration types of violations, these would be tremendous increases if the, if, if we chose to, to make those kinds of changes. And again, there's, we would, in, in every case, before we, before we would apply those additional events, we would look at all those factors that I outlined earlier and, and determine whether or not the proposed penalty was, was a sufficient deterrent to future non-compliance before we made that sort of recommendation to the commission for a penalty that where we would make the penalty that high. Are there questions on that example?
No. Can you, and maybe you're about to, but I'm kind of curious, those are, can we get an example of, you know, of water quality, you know, a discharge permit? Maybe here's some numbers on what that looks like for, in revision five?
Yes. So if there's a municipal wastewater treatment plant with, that's a, a minor source, which is typically what we see, let's say they had twelve months of, of minor effluent violations. And so currently, as a minor source, it would be a twelve hundred and fifty dollar base penalty per event at five percent of the statutory limit. We would do four quarterly events, so the final base penalty would be five thousand dollars and they'd be eligible for a twenty percent deferral if all the violations were minor. Under proposed revision five, the actual minor per event would be three thousand seven hundred fifty. We would, we would, you know, for four quarterly events, the penalty, the final base penalty would be fifteen thousand. And, and we would, I would think that, that we would stay with our current practice of using quarterly events for minor violations and, and monthly events for either moderate or major violations, which is our current practice with, with wastewater treatment plans. So it essentially triples the penalty.
And, and playing devil's advocate, if we were to go to the maximum and go to the monthly rather than quarterly over twelve months, that would be the base penalty thirty-seven fifty times twelve rather than four?
That's correct.
Again, I, I really appreciate your summary or your simplification of it, Chairman. I don't think it clicked for me until you said it just like that. We're, we're effectively really proposing in the matrices, the adjustments to those percentages, steps up of, not insignificant, but, you know, reasonably measured amount on the base, everything will, that fall into those different categories of actual releases rather than the potential releases will, will go up a little bit on the bottom end, but then the top end of that range is significantly increased and that, that in my mind really does explain a lot of the concerns from the public in terms of where there's now potential uncertainty, potential unanswered questions. If I could, I'd love to ask about something that was suggested in one of the comments and I'd love to know from y'all of how practical that may be. I think there were some requests for providing examples of what other, other factors of justice may require circumstances that you would make adjustments up or down or examples of, and, and referencing back to those factors that we have to consider, I think is really valuable to be reminded of. Do we, have we ventured out into any guidance space? And I, I recognize that this may be, well, what does the universe look like in that decision making process? Is it pretty defined and, and bureaucratic and we have relatively little room for maneuvering? Or is it a pretty, it's, it's purely case by case and there's some, some legal decision out there that, that may influence it, but largely it's kind of untested waters? Where are we in terms of our ability to act and our flexibility? So how much, how much have we tried to define that behind the scenes? How much have we tried to show that to the public and given them examples or given them, walked through these sorts of examples with them in, in public work sessions or how, how much could we get to what the public's asking for in terms of trying to provide better clarity for some of those behind the window factors? I guess is my question stated very shortly.
So for other factors, the, the, we, the way that we've done it and, and I'm, you know, maybe we have been rather bureaucratic. I mean, the, the danger with, with other factors is it is, it is a wide open category. It, it can mean whatever somebody wants it to mean. What we've tried to do is, is utilize it sparingly and in a consistent manner because if we, if we begin using it for just anything, then we get inconsistent. And we really do try to be consistent with the way that we treat various entities across the state. And I mean, that's one of the great things about the penalty policy, right? We, we can apply it and it provides some level of consistency, but the other factors is a bit of a wild card. The, what we've done with other factors is we do have some standard things. The most common other factors adjustment is we use it to, to recover the avoided cost of compliance. Often you'll see that on a, on a penalty calculation worksheet where the avoided cost of compliance is calculated as part of the economic benefit is, is, is recovered in a, in another factors adjustment upward. Another adjustment that, that we, that's pretty standard is about a decade ago, we started utilizing the drought index for water rights cases. So for water rights cases, if somebody fails to have a water right and they're taking water without, without that water right, we penalize heavier if that occurs during periods of drought and there's significant increase, whether it's a drought level zero through four, I think there are five levels of drought, we use that index for that. We have also used it at various times and not as often anymore, but if there's a, you know, wastewater treatment plant type of situation, if there are actual discharge violations, violations of their permit, in, in addition to reporting violations, for a lot of small entities, sometimes they can have a lot of reporting violations. And there have been times where we've, we've kind of reduced the number of, we made an adjustment to, to reduce the number or impact of those reporting violations so they didn't really overwhelm the, the actual violations as a part of the penalty. We don't do that as often anymore because when the, back in two thousand and eleven, when the, when the notices of violation were limited to just one year's worth of notice, then it wasn't as big an increase. You know, we, we look at, we look at those smaller entities more often now and pick up those violations, those reporting violations so that hopefully there aren't as many of them on, on a, in a particular case. But those are the, and, and there, there is the occasional adjustment because somebody kind of came in and, and said that they had a particular violation there and there've been times in the past where up to a fifty percent reduction or adjustment downward and the penalty was given for that. But we have pretty much gotten away from doing that in, in recent years. So those are the times we do use it.
I appreciate that.
It's free to use it for whatever reason the commission deems is, is just. If, if at least two of us or three of us decide that an order that staff puts in front of us is not quite just and we want to send it back, you know, legally we have the authority to do that. We've been very reluctant to do that, have, have used that authority very sparingly. I can't think of an example off the top of my head. I think, I think we may have done one or two during my tenure, but the whole Um, but the whole purpose of the penalty policy is to try to bring some rationality and fairness, um, to the process, which is exactly why I think we've been reluctant to, to depart, um, too much from, from where staff has landed consistent with the penalty policy, if that helps at all.
Thank you. Yeah, very much.
Um, colleagues, anything else at this point or should we have Brian keep rolling?
I, I don't have any other questions, but can we take a two-minute break real quick?
Let's, let's do that. How about if we make it five minutes? All right, colleagues, we're, uh, back in session after a short recess. Time is ten forty-five AM. And, um, Brian, I think the floor is yours for the next, next topic.
All right. Well, I just, before we move along, I wanted to make sure there, 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 um, weren't additional examples, uh, different, or, or any other kind of media that you were interested in, in hearing about before we moved along to the, the rest of the presentation.
I don't, I don't think I referred any other particulars. I, I think it was just helpful to see a few and, and they demonstrate really well that point of how there really is just a, a significant increase in potential ranges with, with the emphasis on potential. I think that there's a real strong argument that we would not be poised to, uh, change radically our, our assessment and our practice without expecting to be checked vigorously, uh, in multiple other venues outside of our agency. And that's, that's a natural part of the, the process we operate in. Thanks. Sorry.
All right. The, uh...
I don't have any other questions, so thanks. And Brad, I will say thank you because, you know, one thing I thought about when I was reading the document initially first was, I think, um, you know, part of the reason why, uh, maybe y'all would answer that you reviewed it and you, but you didn't make any changes and then move on is because, um, y'all speak enforcement and penalty calculations and then everything day in, day out, and you are experts, but someone like me is not. And so I, I just need sometimes a little, a little more. And so I appreciate you diving into those examples more. That is helpful. I hope anyone that's tuned in or made a comment who's listening in finds it helpful because I just think any explanation we can give is, is beneficial. And so I, uh, appreciate y'all taking the time to do all that.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're happy to do it. Um, we'll move along to the, uh, programmatic penalty matrix. We made a proposal here to change the major, um, uh, category there, uh, up, uh, from fifteen percent to twenty percent for major sources and from five to ten percent for minor sources. Again, this is a, the programmatic major category is a category that we utilize when somebody fails to have authorization, um, for, for, uh, something. We also use it for the complete failure to have records. And, and we think in particular the failure to have authorization, um, uh, is a, is a more serious type of violation and we believe that, uh, the, the higher penalty there is warranted. Uh, we did, uh, get feedback, um, uh, several commenters supported the feedback. We had some that, uh, that opposed the changes, uh, because they, you know, consider them just paperwork violations, but particularly the, uh, the ones that deal with authorization, we feel are, are very serious and important and, uh, and should be penalized greater. And again, that if, if, often or fairly often, uh, the entity that, that will have these kinds of violations might be a governmental entity. And again, they can avail themselves of, uh, compliance SCP, um, uh, for those kinds of situations if they, uh, are, are, uh, meet the eligibility requirements for that. Are there any questions on the programmatic penalty matrix change?
None here, colleagues? Think we're good, Brian?
Okay. Uh, we, we made a, uh, also a change to the programmatic minor matrix language just to, to clarify it a little bit. Uh, we didn't receive any comments on that, but we changed it to programmatic minor means that less than thirty percent of a rule or permit requirement is not met, um, and it makes the language more consistent with the other, the other language that we use in those matrices. Um, we've already talked about, uh, the number of, of violation events. Um, the, uh, we also made a, a wording change, um, in, uh, in the duration of events for extended noncompliance. Currently, the policy states that the duration of events will be revised as appropriate to reflect extended noncompliance when cases fail to ex, settle expeditiously or before referral to the State Office of Administrative Hearings. We're proposing to eliminate the part of it that says when cases fail to settle expeditiously or before referral to the State Office of Administrative Hearings. Um, and, and we are proposing to remove that because it, it makes it more, uh, consistent with the flexibility allowed for in amended pleadings under thirty Texas Administrative Code Section eighty dot twenty-nine. And we don't, did not get any comments on this change. And so propose to move ahead with it.
I have one, one question, um, on the, I guess the number of violations. There was, I don't remember who made the comment, but we all had it in the summary that another commenter recommended retaining the existing number of events in Table eight because the proposed revision would only serve the purpose of increasing the total penalty rather than provide a more accurate assessment of the violation. Um, again, I don't remember who made it, but, um, how would, how would y'all answer that comment?
Um, there are, there are times when, in, in particular where there are continuing violations that, that fall into the, the minor or moderate category. Currently, we could go up to daily for programmatic, I mean, programmatic major. But, um, the, um, when they fall into those other categories, we're limited to single event for programmatic minor now. Um, and, uh, and yes, it would, it would increase the penalty, but it would, it would also give us the flexibility to go higher if it's warranted. And there are times when, uh, when we have order violations or, or, uh, extended noncompliance, there are times when we could maybe look at that same criteria that, that I outlined earlier, uh, and, and because of a history of noncompliance or, or, um, uh, you know, whether or not, um, prior enforcement actions have been effective, uh, we may choose to penalize it at, at, at a, in an increased frequency. Again, it's not, it is, again, we're not proposing to just generally change the frequency. It would be based on, on some review of all those factors and whether or not the increased frequency is warranted.
Okay. Thanks. I don't have any other questions on that.
Okay. Um, next, I wanted to talk about the deferral. Um, again, the, uh, we've proposed that the, uh, that orders which, in which the respondent has two or more prior administrative orders, administrative penalty orders is set out in the Water Code Section seven dot one oh five B two, B four, and B six would not be eligible for the twenty percent deferral provided for in, in expedited settlement. Um, there were several commenters that supported this change. Um, and, um, the, uh, there's a few commenters did not support change and, and expressed concern that because of the nature and complexity of, of very large sites that, uh, um, especially Title V kinds of sites, that, uh, that a majority of those sites would meet the criteria even if they're well-run. Uh, one, one commenter, um, questioned whether or not offering a deferral encouraged compliance or, or fixing the root cause of the violation. Um, some, we also had a commenter that wanted us to further limit use of the twenty percent deferral. Um, and, um, and, you know, there was just, uh, a lot of different comments about that. Um, and there was also, um, um, a comment that, that encouraged us to not, uh, combine various enforcement actions together into, uh, to one case. Uh, and so we did not propose, uh, any changes to this, uh, based on those comments. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you, that you have about that.
I have one question, and, and that is how close to something resembling a twenty percent expedited settlement deferral could you envision supporting under the other factors as justice may require component of a enforcement order? If there were one particular circumstance that were to come up under a hypothetical Rev, Rev five under this new proposed language with this limitation in place, would, do you think that that would be a, well, do you think that there might be a way that you could try to get there with that sort of a similar adjustment if there was a respondent who really did go to, uh, in, in enforcement staff's view, uh, extraordinary efforts to really try to expedite coming back into compliance or, or moving quickly? I, I guess what my, what I'm trying to ask is, could we still try to get there and do that in the circumstances that really seem to warrant it after this proposed change?
So trying to work a, 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 a reduction in to other factors, I mean, we...
Let me, let me interject there for a second, Brian, just to clarify the question. So I understand what you're asking, Bobby. Bobby, are you asking about sort of an extraordinary case or, or...
I, I think that the, the, this proposed change would remove, uh, a degree of, uh, additional, additional referrals to a, a portion of the, of the regulated community kind of arbitrarily because of their compliance background or history. And I think some of the comments came from a, came from a background of some facilities due to the complexity and nature of operations seem to just attract the bean count, the beans when you're coming to enforcement matters or, or having, you increase the complexity, you increase the likelihood that it's going to be reasonably minor but, uh, unavoidable issues or, or circumstances where they might fall on the enforcement radar. And I'm, I'm sensitive to that concern. I guess my question really is, does the ED have flexibility, uh, to still respond to those concerns in instances where that might be a real problem? Uh, would this change arbitrarily tie our hands where we would now not be able to give relief to those entities that would fall into that squarely like, yeah, everybody agrees, they really went above and beyond relative? I, I guess that's more my question here. And hearing a concern about a general broad change for everyone, do we still have the ability to fix that if we need a escape valve to, uh, deal with the circumstances where, oh, this, I would have really liked to see this kind of an entity in this set of circumstances receiving, uh, a, a, yeah, but talking around it, but how, how constrained would we be to try to get there in the circumstances where this really would be warranted in the future?
Uh, well, uh, to answer your question, I think that the commission certainly does have the flexibility to do that. Uh, we'd have to devise or, or figure out in what circumstances that would be warranted. Uh, in terms of coming back into compliance, uh, we already have the, the good faith effort to comply, uh, reduction, um, of twenty-five percent if they come back into compliance, uh, prior to the, the, the notice of enforcement. Um, and so, and then ten percent if they come into compliance before we send, send the initial settlement offer out. And so that, that's already, uh, comprehended in part of the, part of the penalty policy. Um, but I would have to think on the, the situation that, that you're describing and try to come up with some sort of, um, circumstance that, 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 um, that that would be appropriate in.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Sinclair. And I, my, where I'm coming from really is, as we make changes and propose adjustments to our policies, I think that creates potential for, uh, unforeseen consequences where you've got a, you know, false positive, false, false negative circumstance. I'm trying to think through the hypotheticals and I just want to make sure I think through where there's concerns raised from the public, do we still retain some flexibility to try to adjust and, and account for those concerns? And I think in this, this area, I do see that, that we still have pretty, uh, pretty robust authority to make adjustments if, if warranted. But, uh, I, I appreciate your response, but that does help, uh, confirm what I, what I suspect is the case. does help confirm what I, what I suspect is the case.
And if I may add, and Commissioners, we are guided by, by the statute and seven point one oh five B, the legislature has set forth those situations wherein there are mandatory, the legislature has set forth those criteria for the agency where if those factors are met, and it's usually two or more orders or some other circumstances, when those factors are met, the legislature has said clearly, those are mandatory referrals to the Attorney General's office. And now we have an arrangement where we may agree with the Attorney General's office to continue to handle that administratively. But in those circumstances where the legislature has so clearly said, these are mandatory referrals for civil enforcement, to have an automatic twenty percent deferral for those mandatory matters just did not seem to make sense in terms of the overall goals of accountability and deterrence under the penalty policy. And as Mr. Sinclair said, there are other components for those outlying cases where it warrants under good faith efforts to comply, culpability and other factors under the penalty policy where there may be enhancements that may be appropriate for those circumstances to reduce the penalty in those outlying issues.
Yeah, you know, I would just, I want to make the comment, I guess, for anyone listening in. I, this one I struggled with initially when it was, you know, just first proposed at work session until now, and it was because I, you know, I personally have been out there saying, and I do believe this, that compliance is what we want, right? We're not out there, in my opinion, we are not trying to raise a bunch of money for the general revenue fund. We're not trying to purposely slap fines on people. What we want is compliance. And so knowing I've said that a million times, then how can I get comfortable with, with this? And that's what I've wrestled with over the past couple of weeks. And where I've eventually come down is, and it just happens, it, it happens every agenda just about, or it, it feels like it's every agenda, where there will be a matter in front of us and, you know, you can, you can see the history and say, oh, my gosh, this side has a number of either pending enforcement actions, or it just has had a lot of things going on. And, and they're not questionable, they've been proven, and yet somehow they're still eligible for a twenty percent referral. And, and I'm sure industry folks who are listening would have a, have a lot to say to that and a lot of responses, and, and they could explain why situations happen. But when you're the one taking the vote on it and then having to explain why an entity has multiple issues and then they still get a discount, it's really difficult to explain that to the general public and to members downtown. And so personally, that, that's just how I got there on this. You know, I, I don't think by and large, I do not think most people are purposely trying to pollute and trying to, trying to cause environmental harm. I don't. But I'm, I'm hoping this doesn't come into play much. I mean, that's ultimately the goal, is that, you know, a company doesn't hit, or responded, I guess that's the way I should say it, doesn't, doesn't have, doesn't hit, you know, the seven point one oh five B, the, the items eligible that would, anyway, that would make it fall into this category. So anyway, I just want to say that because, you know, I've, I've harped on explanations, so I just want to explain how I'm getting there and, and what I think about it. So I'll stop there.
And just real quickly, my analysis tracks your analysis, Emily, and Craig's point, that the legislature has identified these violations as something that they want to take out of our hands and have the Attorney General at least look at, if not prosecute them, themselves. But appreciate the comments. Anything else on this point before we move on? Brian, keep going.
All right. That completes the, the, the review of the actual changes that, that we're proposing to make, but we did receive additional comments and recommendations from the commenters. On economic benefit, several commenters wanted to, wanted to, to make a change to the policy to make sure that the penalty exceeds the economic benefit of noncompliance and that the full economic benefit is calculated by the penalty, or, or even to move the threshold for the economic benefit increase from fifteen thousand down to five thousand dollars. We did not, they, they went beyond the changes that we were proposing. We weren't proposing any economic benefit changes, so we didn't, we didn't make any changes as a result of that. Speciation came up, where this is a situation where you would speciate a discharge or, or an emissions event, and that we, that where you would count each pollutant as a separate violation or a separate event when determining the number of events for unauthorized releases that have multiple pollutants, particularly those that occur that at major facilities or cause some harm. And this is something that the agency looked at and, and did very briefly a number of years ago, but we've, we've not done that since then, and it is something that's done, I think routinely in civil enforcement for the state. Compliance history, there were some comments about compliance history and the way it's used. There's a recommendation that we look at out-of-state enforcement actions. Currently, we don't really look at those. We do include EPA enforcement actions. And there was, we're suggesting that we use compliance history more consistently and establish a timeline for classifying off facilities and a regular schedule for updating compliance history status. It's something that we all already do. We are, we have a regular schedule to do that. Each year on September first, we recalculate the compliance history ratings and apply the classifications accordingly. There was also comments about the adjustments that are made to penalties for, for audit disclosed violations and whether or not, you know, the, the enhancements for notices of violation are appropriate, but we, and, and that we removed the five-year limit for compliance history so that, so that a public and state can have a full look at violation history. That would require a rule change to, to do that. And in, and even in the, the statute, we're limited to look at only one year's worth of notices of violation when considering compliance history. So we didn't make any changes in regarding to that. And then there were some general and miscellaneous kind of comments about, that, you know, suggesting that we are more consistent and accurate in our application of the policy, that penalties should increase more substantially, institute mandam, mandatory minimum penalties. And so there's a variety of, and also one particular one where the, there was some concern expressed about Edwards Aquifer violations that, that they tended to think that they were too high, the penalties on Edwards Aquifer violations, and that they should be assessed similarly to other penalties in other media. And I think in this case, they were probably talking about the fact that we will often use weekly events for failure to have an Edwards Aquifer authorization if you're over the recharge zone. And so those penalties sometimes can, can get pretty high. But we did not make any other changes to the, to the penalty policy or proposed penalty policy revision five based on those comments. Are there questions or comments on, on that particular part of the?
Done here, colleagues. Any questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but I will just kind of tee up. I'll probably circle up with y'all at a different point, not, not in this setting. There was a comment raised that I thought was interesting, and I don't understand it enough to know much about it, but it was in the AWWA comments about the way utilities pay their rates. They kind of compared PUC to us and referenced maybe we need to do a rulemaking, and I, I just didn't understand what all that was about, so I'm probably going to need to just circle up with y'all about that, because, I don't know, it was just a comment that stuck out to me. I don't think it's appropriate to dive into it here. The other only comment, and I'm glad you said it, Brian, but I've heard this, and then I, you know, to read it in one or two places kind of gave me pause. And this is just, it, it's always very difficult to, to address this issue, but, you know, just so you know, it's on my radar, may as well say it, but, you know, when people do reference, um, different interpretation, I guess when our investigators go out, that gives, always gives me pause, you know? And, and it's hard because how do you train someone to look at different things and if they, it's a human making an interpretation of something? And, you know, one human might smell something, another human might not, and that kind of thing gets very, very difficult to define and to regulate. But, you know, when I see that comment raised, not just in some of the people that comment on a lot of air stuff, but again, the water folks, that they see reoccurring instances of, how do they say it? Inconsistent rule interpretation, you know, just always gives me pause. And so I know we're continually working on that, and we probably always will be, but I, I just want to make sure that we're always, always striving to be as consistent as we can and to train our investigators to be equal and fair in every region. And I know that's very difficult, but that, that kind of issue is very much on my radar, so I just wanted to say that. But I don't have any further questions.
Bobby?
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm, only thing I may add is just that I, I share some of the commenters' general questions or awareness. I think it hit me closer to home on, on some of the questions about the, the economic benefits of noncompliance and how to calculate that. And I'm, I'm very sensitive and appreciative of just how difficult that is to get to in terms of us trying to evaluate or approximate or understand as the state agency. We, we don't have the tools and the drivers to understand all the implications of what, what the, you know, monetary or capital consequences on, on one of our regularly, regulated entities are when they, when they may have a violation. So that's always a, a call from both, I think, the public and industry that we're going to make that call wrong. I'm, I'm always eager to hear more of how we can try to do that better. I'm, I'm not sure that I see any, any tempting alternatives at this point in time and had very little appetite to try to even raise questions about it during this bite of the apple at our penalty policy, but it's something I definitely share some, a little healthy, healthy confusion on that I'm continuing to try to work through myself. I'd love to have some conversations with y'all, but beyond that, I'm, I'm really pleased across the board.
Thank you for that, Bobby. Why don't we pause there and see if there's anyone signed in to speak? Ms. Smith, do we have anybody signed in on this item?
Well, and Chairman, if I may, this is Ramiro Garcia, if I, if I may, sir, to add a, add a comment to Commissioner Lindley's comments related to consistency, you know, amongst the NOCE. Something, yes, very important to us, Commissioner, and I agree, and it's something that, as we hire folks, you know, as we deal with turnover, you know, is one thing that ED Baker talked about is trying to retain our folks. It's, it's a constant battle for us on ensuring that, you know, you can get four of us in a room and read a, a permit and get four different opinions, you know, and how, what we think it is. And that's part of the, the fun of the job, you know, that it bothers that, that flexi, the flexibility and the ability to talk things through, but we do have a lot of things to ensure consistency as when we hire, you know, we do basic investigator training, we do on-the-job training, you know, before our investigator goes out there and does investigations, they shadow a senior investigator and, and, you know, conduct investigations with them. We have annual programmatic training events where we have investigators attend those in the different media. We have senior investigators that come in and give those trainings. We, we work with legal, we have, you know, our lawyers come in and give training events. It's something that is, is, I agree, you know, that we've, I, I believe very, very much in investigators having professional judgment and being allowed to utilize that judgment, but yes, the, the key thing is having that consistency. So we're always looking for ways to ensure that we are consistent. Now, we have our also investigator manuals, you know, that, that utilizes how you do an investigation, things like that. So there are a lot of things out there, you know, there's a ton of other training that we take, but your point is well-taken, Commissioner. It's something that, that we continue to strive to, to ensure that we're being consistent and being fair, not only in Texas, you know, how we apply this, but, you know, there are folks that do business in Amarillo and Beaumont, you know, and so we want to make sure those two offices are doing the same. You know, we get our monthly calls with our air investigator, excuse me, our air section managers, you know, and organ support Christie Mills Gerrock group, Christie Mills Gerrock's group tackles different issues, you know, and tries to, through the area directors, tackle these issues and then provide that guidance, you know, this is how we're going to do it. But yes, ma'am, it's something that's very important to us because we want to make sure there's a level playing field. You know, we want to make sure that folks are held accountable, but we want to make sure that we have a, a program that makes sense. And you're right, compliance is the number one issue. You know, we, in my tenure as NOCE, it was never out to get huge violations, you know, and penalties. No, it's not it. We want to make sure we help people comply, you know, we want to make sure people get there and get in compliance, and then hold people accountable when appropriate. So we appreciate that, and I'll work with Craig to, and the area directors and Christie, you know, make sure that not only in field ops, but also in enforcement division, you know, how we train our enforcement coordinators, that we're applying these different rules, requirements, the penalty policy, that we're being consistent, because that's something that's very important to make sure that all our citizens understand, you know, what's expected of folks here in Texas. Thank you for those comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Ramiro, and Emily, thank you for the, for the comments. It's a really good point. Consistency is one of the criterion that we're, that we're judged on, that we judge ourselves on. We're not doing a good, good job if we're not applying our authorities consistently. And it's also a, just a perennial issue. It's something that we just need to continue to work on. It's something that we've worked on for, for years. So I appreciate Ramiro sort of laying out what some of the efforts have been along those lines. Anything else before we see if there's anybody signed in to speak? Seeing nothing, Ms. Smith, do we have anybody signed in to speak on this item?
We don't.
Okay. Well, we've heard staff's presentations, colleagues, there's no one signed in to speak. I think we're close to a point where we can consider whether to approve the proposed changes or not. What are your, what are your thoughts? Bobby, let me start with you.
I'm, I'm prepared to move forward today. I think, I think the effort to really think through, consider and digest all the, the possible changes, the, the responses, early feedback and responses from the public, informal conversations, I've, I've heard the, that have occurred where ED's really helped, helped bring greater understanding to this proposal of some of the stakeholders, I'm, I'm good to go. And I'm, I'm looking forward to continuing to have a conversation as we're moving forward on the compliance history rule and on further study of the, what would be, what may be considered in lieu of that county, county-based population trigger, adding in twenty percent enhancement.
Thank you, Bobby. Emily, thoughts?
Um, I, I too am ready to move forward, and, you know, I would just, I have said this before, so I'll say it again, but this is a, this is a big overhaul, and staff deserves a lot of credit for the work that went into this and kind of the creative thinking. And I know I had a lot of questions today, but I do appreciate everything that everyone did. And I very much have the philosophy that the penalty policy is a living and live document. And so we're, sounds like we're going to move forward adopting what's proposed in front of us today. If this doesn't work, if this isn't meeting the intended goals of a lot of these changes, then we can change it again. You know, we don't, we don't have to wait two years, or we don't have to wait, you know, even longer, because I want the changes to accomplish what was set out to be accomplished, right? And so, you know, you got to give it a little time to work, but if changes need to be made because it's not accomplishing those goals, then, then we can revisit, and we, and I think we should. So with that, I can make a motion, I guess. It, it sounds like we're ready, but Chairman, if you have other comments, I don't want to cut you short.
No, I think, I think we're ready for a motion. Thank you.
Well, I guess I can do, since I offered. I, I would move that we approve the executive director's proposed changes to the penalty policy.
I second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Commissioner Lindley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Janeca?
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion carries. We have a new penalty policy, folks. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Brian, especially for your presentation and thoughtful response to the questions and comments that came up today. Thank you, Craig, and everybody who's participated in this. With that, let's move on. Ms. Smith, I'll ask you to call the next item.
Item number two is the executive session, and the Commission will meet in closed session via video conference or teleconference. What time would you like to do that? Would you like a five or a ten-minute break?
Let's say eleven twenty-five. Uh, let's say 11:25.
Okay, so that it, um, will meet at approximately 11:25 as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, including Texas Government Code, Section 551071 and 551074. The Governor's March 2020 Executive Order regarding the Open Meetings Act to take up and consider matters pursuant to items 2A through D as posted and noticed.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The colleagues will drop off this platform.
Chairman, Chairman, can I, would you mind if I just made just a quick comment?
No, I'm sorry. And maybe I should have allowed time for closing remarks, uh, from you.
No, I, I, I just wanted to put a bow on some of the things that I heard. First of all, thank you so much for the, the robust discussion today. I think it's very helpful as we continue down the road with what Commissioner Lindley talked about, about this being a living document. Um, I think that this, um, this, this really is honing this document and making it better, making this policy better. And I think these comments and the discussion are really helpful as we move forward. I want to highlight the environmental justice conversation at the beginning of the, of the conversation today. Um, well noted. We will definitely be reaching out to the Chief Clerk's Office at OPEC as we, um, as we try to provide protection to all Texans regardless of socioeconomic status. That, and so we will, um, we will make that, um, part of our discussion. Um, Commissioner Lindley, your comments about the RTC and our responses there, um, very well noted. I think that, um, you know, there's that saying that says like, because we always do something a certain way, it's not a good excuse to continue doing something a certain way. And, um, you know, I think that maybe we've become comfortable on that. Just that we will, um, we will take those to heart and make sure, um, and be responsive where it counts. Because I, like you, am not an expert on, on our enforcement, uh, which is extremely complicated, as you well know. So thank you for that. We will take that and, and move forward. Um, Brian, thank you so much for the, the examples and for all the work that your team has put into this. We couldn't be here where we are without getting, um, you know, all of the work that y'all, that y'all put in. Um, and then, uh, two last things to finish with. The first is something that brought, was brought up, I want to just highlight for the public one, one more time. The penalties that we collect don't go to, don't come to the agency. For the most part, they all go back to G, to GR, to the state, not to us. And so I think that's a really important point. Um, and then finally, the other part is, is I was listening to some of those examples and the, the idea of sort of the, the maximum increasing. I would also invite the commission's involvement on that. I think that, you know, as a former commissioner, looking at the enforcement docket on a pretty regular basis, you know, we kind of look at it one way. But what I would say is if we're not hitting the mark and we're getting it wrong or you, or possibly, um, going one, too far one way, I would invite you to, to speak into that for us and help us sort of set some precedent, maybe, as we start down, um, the implementation of Revision Five that can help us, uh, that could possibly put some guardrails in place, um, from your perspective. So I'll just leave that out there. Thank you, uh, and, and thanks to everyone else who helped put this together and I will end there. I see Brian Sinclair's hand up as well.
Yeah, yes, uh, thank you, Toby. Uh, I just wanted to test understanding, since the effective date of this policy is a real critical thing. Um, I am interpreting the, today's action as, as making this policy effective on January 28th, 2021. Is that a, is that accurate?
That's my intention, colleagues.
Yes, do we have any inspections that we were waiting to order out, uh, between whether it fell before or after? Are we expecting any, anything getting sent out today? Or is this kind of a quiet day that maybe we, we could put some of the public's mind at S at, at ease? If, if anybody shows up at their property, it's not because we were waiting for Rev 5 to hit and now we're sending our folks out?
Uh, to my knowledge, there was, there was no, uh, no coordination on, on effective date because we did not know what the effective date would be, so.
Good enough for me.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, January 28th it is, it sounds like. Good, uh, appreciate the clarifying question, Brian. Toby, thanks for your comments. I'm sorry to have hastily moved us off that item, but, um, thanks for speaking up. I appreciate it. Um, so the time is now 11:24.
Of all your time.
No, that's fine. Mary, why don't we reconvene at, at an executive session at 11:30 then? And, uh, so we'll drop off this platform, colleagues, join the executive session. Um, somebody will return to this session to gavel us out, likely our General Counsel. And, um, appreciate the conversation today. With that, the time is 11:24 and we are in recess.
The Commission met via video conference for closed session from 11:30 to 12:01 on item numbers 2A and 2C as posted in notice pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. No action was taken. This work session stands adjourned. The time is 12:11.